Precious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to live in this great country and be able to have the freedoms that we have and to be able to govern ourselves. We ask that you be with many men and women overseas who are defending our great country and keep them out of harms way in all branches of our military. We ask that you keep all our first responders, firemen, EMS personnel, law enforcement safe as they keep us safe and protect us as we go about our daily lives. We thank you for the rain to keep our lake as full as possible and we thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. It's in your name we pray. Amen. Thanks. This time I'd like to ask everyone to stand for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time I'll call order the February 12th, 2019 meeting of the Hart County Board of Commissioners to welcome everyone here in the audience as well as those watching at home and those that'll be watching later on, who may watch it later. First item of business tonight will be to approve the agenda. Terrell, do you have any changes?
I don't think I do it this time.
I would like to take item 13F off the agenda and talk about that a little bit later.
13 now.
If everybody's okay with that.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda with the amendment.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sayer, second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is approved minutes of the previous meeting. You've got the meeting minutes of the January 22nd regular meeting in your packet. Is there any changes or additions, corrections? Not, can I get a motion to approve? A motion by Commissioner Oglesby is there, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion? Public comment on minutes? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is remarks by invited guests, committee's authorities. We don't have any one. Item eight, reports by constitutional officers and department heads. Mr. Gordon?
Mr. Chairman, I have no separate report tonight.
Okay. County administrators' report?
Just one thing. We held the open house at Bull Mine EMS station last Sunday, Sunday for last, Super Bowl Sunday. Had a decent crowd come by. Everybody seemed to be pleased with it. So it went over real well. Weather cooperated with the change and it went well. That's all I have now.
Got a question. How'd it coming on the cliff roof up there?
Should be done.
Should be done.
Yeah.
Got it done, did it next time, didn't it?
He did. He jumped in and started last Saturday, Friday or Saturday one and worked through it, he got through it. So he got it done just in the neck of that range, started.
Chairman's report? I don't have anything. I do go through the financial report right quick. This is something we do the first meeting of every month, take a look at our finances, let everyone see what revenues expenditures are doing. For the month of January, actual revenue was $2,828,610. That's against a target of $1,022,170. Key driver to that is property taxes. If you look down on our revenues, real property, target average $462,000 per month, we actually received $1,928,486 in the month of January. If you go back and look at December, there was also a significant number. That's driven by property tax collection and that's done primarily in the October, November, December, January timeframe and that will go down to basically nothing as we go forward in the year. LOST with the sales taxes used to roll back the mileage rate, budgeted target was $179,000. It came in in January at $226,112, again above goal. And if you look at four month history there, LOST is tracking above the target, which is a good thing. EMSEs is our third largest revenue stream and if you look in January, we committed $159,449 against a target of $91,700. That's a little misleading. There were some payments that were caught up here in the previous months and you can see that the October, November, December numbers were significantly lower. And then our fourth largest revenue stream is a vehicle title fee. This is when you go and buy a vehicle, you have to pay that title fee, which is 7%. The county gets part of that, not all of it. Target for that's $56,000. We came in the month of January at $70,638. If you go back and look at the previous three months in addition to January, again, we're green for four months running, so people are buying vehicles. Looking at expenses, our budgeted monthly expense total is $1,022,170. In January, we came in at $1,296,31. We're a little bit over, I think that was Sheriff's car's capital purchase that was budgeted, just hit in the month of January and therefore it threw us over a little bit. Anybody have any questions on the financial report? Okay. If not, Commissioner's report, District one?
No, Mr. Chairman.
District two is not here, Mr. Teasley. He had a medical procedure done today and he won't be with us, so keep him in his thoughts and prayers. District three?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I also attended the open house for the EMS station and I was proud to see those guys, proud of their building there and the community that's going to benefit Golden, Vanna area. And there were a lot of folks that come from those areas and that I thought was a good turnout for them. That's all I have.
Okay. District four?
Yeah, I attended that too. Pretty good thing. I hope we have one soon in Cross Road area. Couple of things, we got a letter from, a report from assessors office in December. I think we probably need to sit down with them and address their concerns, or it seemed like it might be something we need to talk about and I'd like to see us get together with them at some point in time. Also, the building on Cage Street, we need sort of look at that because we in a market that's, it's pretty good for real estate sales and also good for rental. We in a market, we don't, well, look at it, you need to strike while iron's hot if it's something better to do it with. That's all I've got, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it.
All right, and talk more about the assessors later on tonight. As far as next item on the agenda, old business, board of health appointment. As I told you at the previous month, I'd spoke with Dr. Lau. He is interested in continuing to serve, however, he does not want to serve in the chairman role. Do we have any other applicants?
None. Not that qualifies as either the medical?
Has to be a medical doctor or nurse. Can I get a motion that we reappoint Dr. Lau to the board of health? Remove? Have a motion by Commissioner Carter, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Commissioner Sayer, any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item 12B. This is our know-through truck ordinance. As we stated at our last meeting, East Main Street is a city street inside the city limits of Bowersville. It transitions into Bethany-Bowersville Road. Bethany-Bowersville Road is on our know-through truck ordinance and at the time this was put up, there was an agreement with Bowersville Mayor, Mr. John Bailey, who has since passed away. We put the sign up, the intersection of 51 and East Main Street, so that trucks would know when they started that that was, they were going to run into, not get down the part of the way and have to turn around or stop, whatever. But can I get a motion that we take this, where the purpose of this agenda item is to remove East Main Street off of the county's know-through truck ordinance? And this is kind of tied into the CD Bowersville's truck ordinance and a previous meeting that we had with them when we were here to speak, couple of council members. Can I get a motion that we take this as a second reading to remove East Main Street? Have a motion by Commissioner Oglesby, a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Commissioner Sayer. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Our next meeting, we'll have a third and final reading and then that ordinance will be revised and East Main Street removed, provided there is an affirmative vote. Item 12C, Hart Franklin Airport Authority appointment. We've had multiple applicants and a lot of candidates to choose from. We do have one open position. Can I get a motion to fill that position?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman. I've read over all the applicants that applied for this and, you know, there's some good applicants here, but the one that really stuck out in my mind was Mark Brown because of the fact that he's already involved and from his testimony here that he spends a lot of time up there and to me, that means a lot. If you're vested into something, you're already participating and with that, I'll make a motion for Mark Brown to be appointed.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll give you a second.
Have a motion, Commissioner Sayer, a second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion?
Just to fill the unexpired term.
Yes, of Mr. Richard McSpadden, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that. This will be a partial term to fill the unexpired term of Mr. McSpadden. Have a motion by Commissioner Sayer and a second by Commissioner Carter to appoint Mark Brown to that unexpired term to the Hart Franklin Airport Authority. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I've got something I'd like to say. I appreciate everybody that took the time to apply for this job, or I guess you call it a job, apply for this position. I appreciate everybody that done that. I know that everybody be willing to take up their time. I sort of feel the same way Mark should done when I read Mr. Brown and this is not saying anything bad about anybody. One of the things that stuck out in my mind is his willingness to come report to this board of the issues going on and that really was the nail, I don't want to say the coffin, but the nail that really got me, said, hey, I think I like it because we have a lot of board and a lot of authority stuff, we never hear nothing from them, so we have no idea what's going on. And I appreciate the fact that he said that and I hope we get that report pretty soon. Thank you.
Okay. Have a motion, a second?
One more question, Mr. Chairman. When does the term expire? Is, if we got that information? Okay, it's on the website, I mean anyway.
It seems like about two years, a year and 11 months.
20, December 20, I believe it is.
Okay.
Okay. We can verify that. I have a motion, is there any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Congratulations, Mr. Brown. Next item on the agenda, Commissioner Carter asked that we talk about some road paving, work session dates and Commissioner Teasley had mentioned some first time paving, so just wanted to throw that out there as far as a work session to see when everybody would be available.
Would we want to do it after a regular meeting?
That would be my recommendation.
Next meeting you got?
Open meetings, open records.
Maybe in March, we got time, I mean.
Yeah, first meeting in March. Is it okay?
I find a meeting here, there.
Is everybody okay with that?
I see.
Yeah, I mean, I got a lot of information, I need to get it together and get ready for it, that's the reason I was trying to nail it.
Can you list all the road these issues? Yeah.
I can print that off for you in about 15 minutes.
Now, with shape the ends a different story, but I can print you off all roads you got.
All right, yeah.
All right, we're just tentative, we plan on having that after our second, no, I can do the second meet, our first meeting in March, I'll be, I'll be here, I'll be in Michigan that week.
Next meeting?
Let's do it second meeting, if everybody's okay with that.
Yeah.
Just happened to think about that, I apologize. So we'll take that second meeting in March. Next item on the agenda is long point use for the Lake Hartwell Music Festival. This is an annual event that we allow the use of long point. Can I get a motion that we allow Hydra to use it for the Lake Hartwell Music Festival?
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Oglesby, a second by Commissioner Sayer. More discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda, ordinance revision discussion. I put this on the agenda. Back about three months ago, we opened up all our ordinances for feedback and we got in some, it's time that we start looking at this. I think we need to establish a cutoff date on when we're going to close this out or if we want to just leave it open, however you want to do it, but that's something we probably need to start thinking about and looking at possibility of discussing the second meeting in March or April as far as some of the revisions that have been suggested by our constituents and those that we represent. Just wanted to throw it out there and see if anybody had a problem with that.
I'd like to see us leave it open until we get done with it.
Okay.
You know, if somebody comes up with one while we're working on them.
And I'm perfectly good with that. So we will look at that first meeting in April, after the first meeting in April. Okay. All right, moving on into new business, item 13A, FY18 final general fund budget amendments. That's a tongue twister. And Terrell's got a hundred list of budgets that we need to make amendments to, we'll do them all at one time. Some that were over, some that were under. And Terrell, I'll let you just walk through them.
Okay, let me get to that page. In general, every year, auditors get ready to close out the audit, they send me a list of departments, actually they moved all the money around where it's supposed to go and give me a list of departments need to be adjusted. I'm going to go by groups. In general government, overall, it was about, it was $17,677 under. On the digital, it was $41,319 under. Public safety was $211,358 over. Public work was $319,71 under. Public health was $13,719 under. Recreation was $11,844 under. Housing and development was $63,731 under. And the total expenses for the year was $256,300 under. Public safety departments was law enforcement, jail, EMS, merchant management was the budgets that went up. Those you can't really control, you can't, you got to respond when you had to respond and you had to use personnel you had to use. Part of that little misleading, they moved some money around. Back in March, y'all approved $48,000, I believe it was, purchased frequencies with it. We put that under merchant management, due to budget way over. So it all bounces back out, but there's a, the specific list we're going to change, executive increased by $2,827. Tax assessors by $13,498. Buildings and properties by $45,274. General admission fees, administration fees by $487. Superior court by $13,455. Magistrate court $910. Pro Bay court by $5102. Public defender by $970. Board equalization by $381. Sheriff's office by $141,183. Jail operations $18,055. Merch management, we bought the frequencies out of $37,754. EMS by $39,634. 911 permitting, $1,449. The maintenance shop by $59,574. This one was called by Dierfertson County. We moved all the stock, the parts, the stock had to be pulled under the operation budget this year. That was $118,000. They actually, $56,000 was under budget on operations. So it's a little misleading there. And the $9,000, or the transit was adjusted by $2,655. We had more riders this year than we've ever had, so that's increasing salary, part-time people working to move them. The other financial uses, that new when it came in last year, that's where we had to transfer all the funds, whether it's splash money, general fund money, whatever, pass through to IBA, water authority and stuff like that. That one will be adjusted by $85,129. If you look up, that's all the numbers you see. Our total revenues was $12,391,398, which is $493,351 over than what we budgeted. About $68,000 of that was property taxes. The rest, there's other things. Over $100,000 of that was FEMA reimburse, all that's figured in under the increasing product, uh, revenue. The actual expenses was $11,483,794, which is $256,300 less than the budget or 2.19%. We'll put back $665,457, we'll roll back into general fund reserve.
With that report, could I get a motion to allow me to sign the budget amendment resolution so that we have the final budget to keep balanced? Have a motion by Commissioner Carter, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Second, Commissioner Sayer. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the 2019 Little Egan Barnes Academy Recreation Facility Use Agreement. These are annual agreements that we sign with both groups. Can I get a motion that we approve both? Have a motion by Commissioner Oglesby, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the county-wide radio system upgrade status. That's a project that Terrell's been working hard on.
Yeah, I give a pretty lengthy report in there and I apologize for that part of it, but this is something that's been in the process for two and a half years and you'll see the steps. The bottom line while we need this is the public safety, the public works people, the school system, all are lacking greatly when it comes to capability of radio communications. I talked off officially with the board of education and the cities and come up with the idea, let's approach it as a group. You can buy 400 radios a lot cheaper than you buy 20 radios. That was the pretense of everybody grouping together and getting group prices on everything. We have bought the frequencies, like I say, back in near March, whatever it was, and we can take those three frequency pairs and have enough of the digital system to supply the whole school system for frequency special. School system, counties, cities, there'd be enough room on that system to handle everybody. Using three repeater systems, where we, now we've got five, six, seven different ones out off, that some of them talk to one another and all this stuff, but all, everybody would have the capability to have their own private channels for talk groups. We can have a common channel that we all need to talk to, talk to another on a lot of times. And I've got the engineering done, Motorola came in and done almost a year with the engineering testing for nothing. They think, they go get there, it's on the backside, I'm sure, but we didn't have to put any money out up front other than personal frequencies. So I think we're at the point now, I've got enough information, I can actually go sit down and we can discuss minute details with the other entities, where we all know what kind of money we're talking about. Depending on the list I've got for them is correct, that's going to get adjusted up and down, they may not need as many as they thought they did, they may need a few more than they thought they did, radios. But that's where I'm at now, is to get you, at least let you all know that I need, we get to the point where we can start sitting down and actually doing some serious talking on some cost sharing on part of it amongst everybody and individual, I mean, it's individual partner can buy their own radio, but the system itself, there's no reason why we can share the costs. So that's where we're at and I don't know, y'all want to make it official, but not all this has to come down in the, you know, government, greenhouse amongst everybody involved at some point, that'll have to be passed off by y'all.
I think we can take that, at that time, there's no need to.
Again, I didn't know, I just wanted to be sure that y'all knew I was talking to these people seriously, you know? I didn't want to do it without y'all's, at least one of the bodies or vote, whatever we may need. But that's where it, and I've got folders full of information that bore everybody completely to death if I say anyone overdo that. But I'd be happy to ask anybody's questions that you got now or later.
Any questions?
So basically what you say, we'll have a system set up where everybody in this county, city, school, everybody can communicate with each other if they need a ride.
Correct.
That's good.
Yeah, right now, everybody's got basically one frequency piece and you take law enforcement for instance, if they got, they got regular stuff that's going on all the time. If they have a chase, they can, whoever's talking on top of everybody, they need private channels in there where they can switch off to different channels, part of the people need to be involved in certain situation and then there, right now, you got somebody, you got somebody in chase and somebody key up over here talking about unlocking a car and they're covering up the deck that's involved in chase. It's dangerous. Fire department.
Fire, same way.
It's dangerous, it's law enforcement, you got a burning building, you got people inside and they depend on radio communication back and forth to, for a live line. Well, if they need more help, we dropping tones on top of them here, paging out more firemen, just completely blanking out radio for close to two minutes. A lot can happen in two minutes if you inside somewhere and it's on light. So it's a safety feature for everybody. And again, if we can do some cost sharing, any of the costs is, it's a lot less expensive for all of us to go together and pay for one heart system and everybody shares some cost on it than it is for each individual to build their own system.
Well, that eliminates some of the dead spots we got in the county.
That'll eliminate all dead spots.
Oh, good.
Again, that's why we spent a year and a half engineering on different frequencies and different antennas and more we need to go on equipment. So by the maps, the engineering maps, that'll eliminate all dead spots.
Oh, good. That's good.
Good job on that, Terrell.
Thank you.
It's not only me, I've had people in sheriff's office working on it.
You've taken the lead, all right, you've been the quarterback on it and we appreciate.
Guys, I don't do nothing by myself, there's always a lot of people in the background.
But you, you're making it happen, we appreciate that and as well as everybody else involved because it's for the greater good of all, so. All right, next item on the agenda is a request by clerk of court, Mr. Frankie Gray. Will come on down?
Gentlemen, you should have had an email and a cost estimate from me last week and basically I'm here tonight, I'll pat these out, RC. I'm here tonight to let you know, in 2008, when I ran for election, everywhere I went, I covered about 90% Hart County politic and everybody said, "Don't get rid of my deed book, don't get rid of deeds." Well, I'm here tonight to tell you that in about 10 more books, we're going to be at the end of road with deed books out of space. I have, about four years ago, I rearranged the deed room, moved some tables out, moved some tables in, kind of got smaller, but it created some space to add one more shelf, which you could put about 75 books in, but I am at the end of that road now, guys, and I think about two more books, I'll be full. There'll be nowhere else to put them. I went back into that deed vault, I've looked, I've thought, I've pondered. I thought about going up on top of the shelf, but I'm a little reluctant to do that because of liability. These books are pretty heavy, as you know, if you come in there and pull these books, they have weight to them and I just, I just hate to put people on a ladder to be pulling these heavy books off the top shelves. So what I've done is I reached out to various clerks around the state, around our area, and if you looked in the email I sent to you the other day, several clerks have went this route and basically we went paperless. This company, CoFile, is a partner that partners with my software company, Icon. They have a great relationship together. I reached out to them after talking with these clerks and this representative came to Hartwell and met with me and we talked about moving forward into the future. And future basically is we're going to have to go paperless, there's nowhere else I can put these books, I don't have space for the books. And if you looked in my email, I spent about $7,000 a year buying deed books. Every four deed books that I order is $725. And Brad and I with CoFile, we looked and we processed about 8,000 deeds, liens and plats last year, just in Hart County. And so he posed an estimate to me that I And so he posed an estimate to me that I forwarded on to y'all guys in the email. But that's why I'm here tonight. I'm here to say, this is where I'm at. This is what other clerks in our area have done. Albert Franklin has just went in with this, because they're like me, they're running a room. And if you've been in the deed vault lately, you'll see that I am on my last shelf with the deed books. This covers deeds, liens, and plats, and basically what happens, if you read the email today, basically, when it comes in now, or if you approve this, as it comes in, we'll scan it, we'll receipt it. If it's intangibles, we'll collect the intangibles, we'll receipt the intangibles, and this is forwarded on to CoFile, where they index it. And, you know, I know in the email and the proposal that CoFile presented, it tossed about cost. And today, sitting in court, you know, I thought, what do we gain? And the copy that I made to you, I handwrote this one in in court, you know, what we gain, and we talked about this last week with Brad, is more cost less. We pay CoFile a fee per real estate document indexed. It's less expensive than both full and part-time employees that require training, supervision, benefits moving forward. Due to book space being gone, we're restructuring, we're not downsizing, we're just restructuring how we do things. My office has been tasked with additional courts, et cetera, with less staff. And the indexers with CoFile are certified indexers throughout the state. And basically, what I love, and if you saw in my email, Chautuga County is involved in lawsuit right now, where a new clerk took over a deed that was processed ten years ago, there was a mistake made, and they're in a lawsuit now because of that mistake ten years ago. And that's something that's worried me for the last ten years as clerk, is we're human. We make mistakes, especially in that office, you're getting interrupted daily, minute by minute, as you're trying to enter this information. And so this company, CoFile, has errors and emissions insurance, so they would cover us there when we're getting this stuff indexed. So if you look at, what do we gain, the copy, that kinda points out five or six things that we gain as part of this process. Any questions?
I got a question.
Okay.
Where will the records actually be kept? Will they be kept on the computer or?
During the cloud.
In the cloud.
They probably all over the ground out there today. They are. Basically, to ease your mind there, about seven years ago, I was in Guinea Pith County for child support e-filing. We started that, I agreed to do it, and that was a nightmare. But as the kinks, the bugs got worked out, I'll tell you today, and my ladies will tell you, they wouldn't trade that for nothing in the world. It's paperless, it works great, we have a great relationship with Child Support Office, and that works good. January one, we were mandated with e-filing civil cases. All civil cases now, lawyers pro se have to e-file that through us, through a vendor called Peach Court. That is start out, it started out a little rocky, but it's getting there, because it's something, it's something we all having to learn. Two years ago, I was mandated with e-filing a plats. Now, a surveyor, if you get a plat done, the surveyor has to e-file it into me through the clerk's authority. We accept it, and we're paperless with plats. Now, with that said, Ricky, good question, how's it backed up? I'm backed up through state archives, I'm backed up through my software company, and they also have a backup in Colorado.
Well, you just answered my second question. Thank you.
I had a server crash about two years, two months ago. Came in one Monday morning, it was down. I was down a day and a half, they got me going with a temp server. Terrell got me a server order. Within three days after getting the new server, I was back up and running, because we had backup. We didn't miss a beat. So they were able to do it at six-thirty at night and run it all night for three nights. One other good thing is CoFile and meeting with them. I sell subscriptions to Icon, my software. This is for lawyers that wanna purchase this for a year, they can sit at their office, sit at home, and they can look up our documents, our civil and our criminal, it helps them in their jobs. Also, with CoFile, with the real estate, we could sell subscriptions to this, so that would help offset the cost, and I feel like the attorney abstractors would take advantage of that also.
So one question I did have, is the turnaround time. From the time you get it and the time they?
Get it processed.
They get it processed and get it online, we're looking at basically a week, five days?
They say four. They say four, but he's told me within twenty-four hours has it, but they always like to put four days. At the end of the month, he will print out a grant or grantee book that he will send me, that, you know, abstractors and attorneys can use to look up stuff. The books that are there now will stay there. I'll probably, if this is approved, I would have probably add a couple of terminals, and my thoughts on doing that is adding them on top of the plat shelves to help the public, because I have three terminals back there now, but I'd probably have to add a couple more. Now, I get that free through the clerk's authority, all my technology, computers, et cetera, is free through the authority.
That brings up a nut question. What you got all in in the book, will you take that and put it into this officer? Or leave that like?
They, that's a good question. They're doing a historical project, CoFile and Icon, these two have merged. They got me back to nineteen ninety now, and they're, the next step is to go further.
That's separate, that's not part of the.
No, no, it's separate, totally separate. We do, I do budget every year to get my plats online. Right now, I think I was a thousand a year, I'm five hundred now, maybe, that y'all guys approved, and every year I get that up, and we get that many plats on, online, the old plats.
He's by far anybody, any county around here, he's got a lot more than any county around here online.
We try to be proactive with the technology. It's here, and I'm grasping it. We have a twenty-three-year-old in the office, she teaches us about computers. But we do, we get in there and we learn it, because it is the wave of the future, and we know that.
So we're looking at a cost of approximately three dollars and twenty-seven cents per document.
Yes, sir.
Could I get a motion that we approve this? I might motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Sayer as a second. Second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Appreciate your partnership, gentlemen. Next item on the agenda is acceptance of Whistling Creek Trail as a county road. This is located off of Mount Hebron Road, and it was built to DOT standards, it's already been inspected when it was being built by former county administrator and public works director, John Cami, as well as Ronnie Dickerson, a road department supervisor, and everything's in order, and these are requirements.
So move this, Jim.
Have a motion by Commissioner Oglesby to adopt it as a second. Second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is public comment. If someone would like to come and address the board, if you'll come to the podium. Nobody for public comment?
Someone with a day's session personnel, is it?
Have a motion by Commissioner Oglesby to go into executive session, personnel, and real estate.
I'll second.
As a second. Second by Commissioner Sayer. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously.